Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Okane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Please stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the republic which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we'll go to the consent agenda. There's no proclamations or anything. On the consent agenda, it's items two through 10C. Consider them passed unanimously by the council unless a separate roll call vote is requested. You want to speak on item, please come up as I read that agenda. If you want to speak on item not under the agenda, please come up under citizen concerns. Remember to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is the reading of the city council minutes of March 21st and 22nd. Three are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution accepting a state housing trust fund agreement with Iowa Finance Authority. B is a resolution authorizing submission of an airport improvement grant application to FAA for one new snow removal equipment carrier vehicle and a rotary plow. C is a resolution approving submission of a grant application to IDOT RISE program for the construction of Alicia Avenue in the South Bridge Business Park Coal Link Logistics Project. Four is actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Sioux Gateway Airport Roof Replacement Project Phase One. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Sixth Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Ninth and Ruston Intersection Water Main Replacement Project. Five are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a pipeline license agreement with BNSF for the sanitary sewer main crossing for the Sixth Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. B is a resolution approving amendment number two to the consulting services agreement with DGR for the Leach and Ingleside Avenue Reconstruction Projects. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Lines and Stripes for the 2022, 23, and 24 Fire Hydrant Painting Project.
I have a question on that one. One thing that's continuously come up is what kind of paint are we using? I see any reference to any consideration of that?
Spirit of the Hulus, purchasing manager. I had the spec. Utilities, I don't. He did come up with the spec, so I'll have to have him contact you on that.
Okay.
What kind it is.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Six are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the personnel classification by adopting an updated job description for the position of code enforcement officer and firefighter. B is a resolution amending position classification manual by adopting updated job descriptions for the position in the wastewater treatment laboratory supervisor and wastewater treatment maintenance supervisor. Error in the heading, Amber will explain.
Yes, thank you. There was an error in the classification code for the laboratory supervisor. The original resolution that was published stated that the class code was I four dash six five zero six. That Roman numeral four should be removed and has had been removed in the resolution to be executed by the mayor tonight. That was a scrivener's error.
Seven are authorizing payments. A is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing payment to JR Roofing for a portion of the city facilities roof replacement project. B are motion approving total payments issued for the reporting period February of 2022. C is Knife River. One is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Knife River for the Taxi Way C-South Reconstruction Project at the airport. Two is a resolution approving change order number nine, accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Knife River for runway seventeen dash thirty-five reconstruction and shift project Phase One, Schedule A and B, construction at the airport. Three is a resolution accepting and authorizing final payment to Knife River for the runway seventeen thirty-five reconstruction and shift project Phase Two, Schedule C, construction at the airport. Eight are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving the final plat of the residents at Elk Point, third filing petitioner Elk Creek Development.
I have a question on that one, too. I wasn't here for the first two, but under my understanding, it was for eighty-one lots, one hundred and forty-three residential units. And unless I'm missing something, there's only sixty-two lots up to this point that are approved. And I'm wondering if that is a reduction in residential units as well?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. There's a fourth filing that's yet to come that would be fronting on Elk Creek Road.
Okay.
Which is underdesigned for pavement. That'll be coming forward yet this year. In regards to the number of units, one hundred and forty-three is still the same number that was used in the development agreement. Some of the lots that you reference are duplex and twin home.
Yep.
So that makes a. Yep.
B is a resolution approving subdivision improvement installation agreement with Elk Creek Development in connection with the residents at Elk Creek, third filing petitioner Elk Creek Development. Nine are application beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Ten are boards and commissions and committee minutes. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those? Seeing none, we'll vote.
I'm going to abstain on the Palmer Candy Company. By C. B. Two B. Because you just eat so much of their candy. Better have so much of their candy.
He's bi.
Exactly.
Likes him.
Stand, buddy. They start with ice cream now or something?
Passes five zero. Levin's ordinance dedicating and naming three unnamed rights of way adjacent to Glen Avenue and South Allen. As Glen Avenue, the petitioner, the City of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration approved, March 21st. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move third reading.
I don't know if you're on it, buddy.
Passes five zero. Twelve's an ordinance dedicating and naming an unnamed right of way adjacent to twenty-nine fifteen Glen Avenue as South Allen Street. The petitioners, the City of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration passed, March 21st. I'll move second.
Second.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Move third.
Second.
Passes five zero. Ordinance rezoning thirty-six fifty Correctionville Road from zone classification AG to RR and SR. Petitioner Douglas, Doug Manupirup, P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration approved, March seventh deferred from the March fourteenth and twenty-first meeting. I'll move to delete.
Second.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Come speak on it.
I've just got a brief statement. Steve Archer, forty-one oh one Green Avenue. At the first council meeting regarding this project, no one on Green Avenue or Correctionville Road expressed any objections to Mr. Moose's project. The concern was controlling the water runoff that was sure to happen. After watching the previous council meeting, it is clear that this is a trying time for all involved. I am not here to add insult to injury. All I would like is a little reassurance that however the zoning process goes, is that the runoff issue is still a concern. Whether it is rural residential or residential makes no difference, but I believe that allows for some oversight by the city. If it were to remain zoned as is, I don't think that would be the case. A twelve acre can of worms has been opened up under the current zoning with relatively little ability of oversight. It's clear Mr. Moose has considerable time, effort, and money invested, and I am sympathetic to that. We on Green Avenue do as well. I'm just here trying to preserve that. Please weigh in the fact that the can of worms that has already been opened is pointed directly at Green Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Actually, can you say your, did he say his name and address?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that. Sorry. Thank you.
So. I just want to be clear on something, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And I'm probably repeating what you just said, but so you're saying the drainage issue is still an issue that needs to be dealt with?
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Absolutely. Yeah. What used to be static ground, trees, grass?
Right.
That would have caught runoff.
A lot of it. Never had an issue until all this transpired. Now it is completely different. Twelve acres of land is opened up, graded, and it all runs straight to Correctionville Road and Green Avenue. I, that, that's my only concern. Like I said, I'm not here to add insult to injury. I understand.
You're just worried about your property.
It's going by the wayside, but things have clearly changed. So I just.
Okay.
Wanted to get it on record.
Thank you. Jeff, did you have anything to add to that?
Sure. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As a result of the petitioner's request to delete this item, we have begun the review process for a single-family house at this location that would not require any public infrastructure as the subdivision had previously shown. Our first review of that site plan was completed last week at Design Review Committee. Comments were submitted at that time, and I know additional comments are pending and being provided to the applicant. But clearly stormwater runoff and prevention will be one of those comments. Roger, our environmental services employee has been out to the site numerous times and has suggested improvements to the petitioner, Sam Moose. And some of those have already been made, but I know additional improvements will be requested as the building permit is applied for.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
And I, I would just repeat that I, I think, at least in our engineering team meeting, they shared some of those same concerns and said that that's why they're not willing to open up that culver at this point in time because all of that water would just run down onto your property. So I don't want to, I'm not putting words in Dave or Gordon's mouth, but I think that it would be important to them as well that those things that Jeff is identifying are in place prior to removing those impediments so that it doesn't just flow onto your property.
Right. Typically, stormwater pond is not required for a single-family infill home. In this case, it will be required because of the amount of square footage of hard surface, not with just the driveway because it's quite lengthy, but also the, the size of the home and the size of the accessory building that they intend to build on this site. It will trigger the requirement for stormwater pond.
What would the zoning be?
The zoning is currently ag and it would remain ag.
Just because it's one single-family dwelling?
Ag requires twenty acres or more, and he clearly has that on this site. It's close to one hundred and fifty acres.
Jeff, do you think that in light of the shortage of housing that we have in this community, do you think see this item come back in the next, within the next twelve months or so?
I think the petitioner and the landowner have looked at other options that may involve some additional lots fronting off of Correctionville Road that would not require any new public infrastructure. Clearly, we won't get to any large lot numbers. I don't see any high density occurring on this site just because of the lack of sanitary sewer as well as the topography issue here. I think there is an opportunity to get a few more lots out of this area.
Okay. Thank you. Fourteen, I'll move to delete because we deleted sixteen, or thirteen, so.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Yeah.
Okane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Fifteen's a hearing and resol, hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorize the city deed a portion of the vacated north-south alley at budding West First and South Center Street. The petitioner's Los Altos Rentals. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? The public hearing's now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Thirty-Eighth Street Booster Station Improvements Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero seventeen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the twenty, twenty-one Annual Sidewalk Program Project Downtown. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero eighteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the FY twenty-twenty-two fiber optic project. Anyone to be heard? The hearing's open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
That was a motion? No, second.
Oh, I need to move it. Now the hearing's open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero nineteen's a hearing and resolution assessing a civil penalty against Bailey's Convenience. One thousand Morningside, Iowa, I, Morningside Avenue for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty's a hearing and resolution assessing a civil penalty against V vape thirty-four oh seven Singing Hills Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty-one's an ordinance amending chapter eight point zero eight entitled Disorderly Conduct of the Municipal Code to update the chapter to comply with changes in state law. First consideration approved, March twenty-first. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
Move that.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Second and third.
Second.
Or third, I guess.
Second.
Passes five zero twenty-two's resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Norad Americas for activated carbon changeout services at the renewal, renewal fuels building located at the wastewater treatment plant deferred from March twenty-first. I'll move that.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the deferral or what?
They defer it as a ruling for their insurance certificate. They've since applied that to us.
Oh, they have. Did they just, oh, so everything's in order then. Okay, thank you. Five zero. That concludes the agenda portion. Are there any citizen concerns?
Good afternoon. I sent an email to you guys on Sunday night last week.
And I have you state your name and address for the record, please.
Paul Koskovich with J-Lan, twenty-one oh six Third Street.
Thank you.
Here in Sioux City. I have not heard back from any folks regarding it, so I'm here to address it. Why are we not awarding low bid approved vendor for a project? Not only low bid, but substantially low bid. Nowhere in the bid documents does it say that we are going to give preferred treatment to a vendor that provides both services at said property.
Do you know about this?
So I would like to know why my low bid is not being accepted.
I could address this. This is relation to spraying and mowing. In this case, J-Lan bid only on the spraying at the actual wastewater treatment plant, chose not to bid on any of the lift stations and in the determination of purchasing, and then I supported that decision. The wastewater treatment plant wanted to award the spraying to one, to one bidder. So in this case, he bid, he did bid wastewater treatment plant, but he didn't bid any of the lift stations. And therefore, we decided to package it as one spraying contract.
And that was advised or at least recommended or desired by the wastewater treatment staff, so they're working with one for all of the facilities rather than just the main center?
In another case, he pointed out where there was a separate bidding and mowing. The water plant originally wanted to award it just to one vendor who would do both, but there was such a large discrepancy in what he bid versus what other bid that we did separate the spraying and mowing into a spraying contract and a mowing contract.
Does anyone here see that it's an issue that we're choosing a company to do one to save or to spend? They're going to spend an additional, I think it was six or eight hundred dollars, forty percent more because they want to use one person. I mean, we bid out stuff every day where a utility contractor will do the paving, but he won't do the underground work. We do this all the time. I mean, how does this not the same, same opportunity here? In addition, nowhere in the paperwork does it say I have to bid both items. Nowhere in the bidding documents does it say that we are going to award to only one company that does both duties. Nowhere does it say we're going to give preferred treatment for that. So the clarity in the documents is just not there. I'm approved. I've won several properties beyond this one. I should be awarded this one. It doesn't make any sense for the city to spend, to spend an additional forty percent because they want to make one less phone call and deal with just one company. I'm spraying the project one time throughout the season, once. Next month, we're supposed to be. I mean, the excuse is just silly. It is, Bob. I'm sorry, it is. I'm, I'm approved. I should be the winner. I mean, it's to the point like, if this is the case, it's going to be go. I'm not going to bid any more projects for the city. Why? I'm wasting my time. What if the guy that runs the next place wants to use someone else? I mean, ultimately, it's that person who works there and runs that plant that decides rather than low bid. That doesn't make any sense.
So you, you, so you did bid, and I apologize, Paul. I, I've been out of town.
Sure.
And so I'm catching up on it, and I haven't reviewed all of the backup materials that you're talking about. But you bid for spraying on what, one location, basically? Just kind of help me out under.
So he, he bid at multiple locations and was awarded at some of the locations. This is the wastewater treatment plant where in the discretion of the wastewater treatment plant, they didn't want multiple vendors getting the spray contracted. They wanted to award it to one contract. He, he bid on just the main plant. He didn't bid on any of the lift stations.
But it's only a once, one spray a year for, just for weeds and that's it?
That's correct.
I don't know about the lift stations, if they're a single spray. I don't have that.
But for this, for the wastewater treatment plant, that's just one, one treatment.
And nowhere in the paperwork does it say that you are required to bid the lift stations and the wastewater treatment plant to be eligible? The reason I didn't bid the other stops is because looking at prior numbers and the way people bid it, there's no money in it. These guys are going out to these locations literally for twenty dollars. Twenty dollars.
Okay, okay.
Just so they can beat the other person?
I guess. I mean, or they like to work for free. I mean, you guys know you can't drive across town for twenty dollars and make a nickel.
What I, what I want to be careful of, Paul, and, and again, I apologize for not getting back to you with my comments, but what I want to be careful of is that this is under citizen concern. So I think at least what my thinking is, is that we need to look at that, and if it needs to be on the, an agenda item, so we can have discussion. We can do that, but I don't know if that's, I don't know where we are in that process.
I will say the contracts have been awarded.
Passed that, probably.
Have contracts in this city ever been rescinded?
Not very often. I don't, Amber, do you? You probably.
It would depend on what type of contract is awarded, or some spreader, for example, to have a clause for the city to terminate the contract for convenience with a sudden notice, but I'm not sure which contracts were executed.
I will tell you guys that I brought this to the attention two weeks ago to the mayor and the city manager. I didn't hear back.
That, that is incorrect. You and I had a phone call with Spirit of the Hulus where we told you exactly what we were doing, and I believe that was two weeks ago.
I didn't hear back on why I'm not correctly getting awarded this.
We told you in our phone call how we were wording it and why.
Apologize.
Right.
But your question is on the procedure, and I'm hearing that we probably followed the procedure or the, or the policy correctly, but you're frustrated by it because you're saying the documents, you're saying the documents didn't read that way.
No, Dan, they didn't follow it. I was low bid. Low bid wins, right?
He's saying, he's saying that low bid should always win no matter what.
No, but if the documents had, had specifically stated that you, you have to do both, you have to do spraying and, and mowing.
Or that there would be preference or something, yeah.
And there was nothing in that, but I believe there was the standard language that the city reserves the right, just like based on the best interest of the city. And in this case, and speaking with the wastewater treatment plant staff, they didn't want multiple contractors doing spraying.
But spending six hundred dollars additional is in the best interest of the city?
Well, we don't know that the other vendor would have honored the rest of the bid had we said, we're only going to give you the, the lift stations. We don't know that they would have.
But in the past, the prior vendor that did the spraying only does spraying, they don't do mowing.
I think the, yes.
So we do know that it is possible that the city will select vendors to do multiple options and not do, and not do both.
We have done that, yes.
Mm-hmm. So again, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around why we're spending an additional six hundred dollars to go with a different company.
Well, Amber, Amber, you probably have, you probably have not looked at this closely. I mean, is this something we could just review after this meeting, review in the next week or so to see what?
We've already committed ourselves to next year's bid being very explicit in how, in, in why we could award contracts to multiple vendors.
That it's not just an automatic low bid gets it. I'm guessing is without, what you're saying is that you're changing.
Yeah, is an example like, and likely next year, we will, we will not award, we will not have the bid so that it appears that you could bid lift stations and not the main plant, or vice versa.
I guess I didn't realize, I mean, I don't, I know that Paul wants a job, but I guess I thought it was like you do at your house, you get five or six different sprays. And I could understand that to make sure that they actually got it done, but if it's. But okay. Well, Dan, you can look into it with Amber and get us a little report. Yeah, because I, I'm just not up to speed on it, Paul, and I, again, I apologize. I don't mean to further frustrate you with the process. And I am concerned that I would want you to continue to bid on city contracts. I'm just being real candid with you and upfront. I'd want you to continue, so. I'd like to just review it with the city attorney's office and. and see if there's anything we can do, and if we can't, I'd rather tell you we can't do anything this year, but I just want to try to answer some of your questions.
Should bids go out? Like all the spraying bids go out for all the different locations? It all went out at one time, yes.
Okay, Dan, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard? Matthew.
Uh, Skywalk Art Show was a huge success. It was great. Um, the mural was beautiful, the artwork was beautiful, um, spacing was great, everything was nice and spaced out, there's plenty of room to move around. Um, this week, we've got a couple of big things, art ceteras, coming on Friday, uh, Breakfast with the Bunny at Combe Park on Saturday. And I don't know if everybody else is keeping up with planting at home, but I'm already potting up all of my plants at home under my lights and, uh, banking my rain barrel water. Got about two hundred and fifty gallons saved up so far, so if you haven't hooked up your rain barrels yet, hook them up.
Awesome.
Do you have?
I'll help you.
No, I don't have.
He said no.
I don't have plants either, flowers, so. Go ahead.
Um.
I'm sure Paul won't spray my yard this year now.
No, you're out. I'd like to bring up the construction that's coming. We have a lot of construction happening, everybody's wanting it, but we have to deal with the inconvenience of it. Uh, we had a really great public hearing last week on the Storm Park Boulevard reconstruction. It's a lengthy process. There's always planned in some kind of stages to make it as convenient as possible while making it as affordable as possible. And the, the engineering department, as well as our, uh, third-party engineers reminded me and I think some citizens that the longer it gets drug out, the more stages and phases that it has, the more expensive it is. So they don't try to make it more inconvenient on purpose, but they do try to take in consideration, travel in and out of the neighborhoods and convenience, but they have to be mindful of how much these projects are costing by stretching them out a little bit further. So I think these public meetings that we have to talk about these big projects are really very, very, um, useful. I really appreciate the ones that I can go to. I like to interact with, um, the folks who live in the neighborhood. I had some really good visits that afternoon. Uh, we probably have, just in the next thirty days, seven, eight million dollars coming up, is that about right, Dave? A project starting, so it's very exciting. We're kind of getting what we want, but we got to go through the bumps to get there. So, cool. No pun intended. Pun intended. We want to get rid of the bumps.
Waters?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say was recap, um, this last week wrapped up the twenty-fifth season for N A I A that we've had here, um, at the Tyson Event Center. It's, it's been a great ride, and I wanted to share, there was some figures shared on social media too about, um, the N C double A D two Women's Basketball Championship. Uh, their attendance to watch that game was about six hundred and thirty-seven individuals. The, um, the N C double A D three Women's Basketball Championship was around eleven hundred, and at the Tyson Event Center, we had almost three thousand individuals show up for the championship game. So if you didn't see, um, any of the photos shared or anything, it was incredible attendance, especially for having, um, I know Dort is obviously close and they traveled really well, uh, but then looking at Thomas More University from substantially farther away, um, still had a great showing, and so, um, it was a great event, great to have it back in Sioux City, look forward to the next time, um, but just wanted to report on that, that the energy down there was pretty spectacular, so I'm glad and congratulations to Thomas More for, um, for winning there.
To add on to what you're saying, Alex, about the visitors, um, I was told, I think you were too, at our last, um, Sports Commission meeting, that the C B B is going to have a, some software that will do some calculations as to how many visitors we get. And what that does to our local economies, so soon we'll be able to kind of report some of that, what the impact of these events are having on our community.
Yeah.
Dan didn't need a software.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Danny Gan could do that.
Yeah, that was, it was pretty outdated, and so now I think we have an updated software that will calculate that for us.
Yes, it's going to take a lot into consideration.
Another waste of money. Can do the number ahead of time.
Down to number of bottles of water purchased, et cetera.
Okay.
No, it should be great. That's all I have.
Mr. More, good to have you back.
Thank you.
Really nice to be back.
I truly mean that.
Make it as brief as you possibly can.
I will. I only have one item, it's a big item, the litter dash twenty twenty-two is Friday, April twenty-ninth. I would like to form a team, so I might have to call on Roger to help me do that. It's, uh, it's exciting time. I, I've done it in the past, and, and it's fun to have a team and work together, and I usually have done the Prairie Creek, I'm u- the trail, I believe, but I think I'm going to get to some more visible areas if I can, but that's April twenty-ninth.
Visible for people seeing you work or visible for?
I.
For seeing the garbage.
Okay.
I guess you see it on the trail, but April eighteenth is our deadline for forming the teams, and I know that's coming up pretty quick, so. And I wish we could do litter dash once a month, but.
Yeah.
Wear me out, so. Anyway, that's all I have, merits nicely.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.